Let me call our regular town council meeting to order. It is October the ninth, 2025 at about seven oh one in the evening. If you would, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have with us this evening Pastor Walker. If you would, do our invocation for us. We appreciate it.
Our Father, we're thankful to be part of this community. And I believe sometimes that we fail to realize just how blessed we are to be part of this community and to see what you've done and your protecting hand in our lives. We're thankful that it's still a family oriented area where we can bring up our children, our grandchildren. And Father, I pray that you will bless these men. They've been used mightily of thee. And I pray that you will bless them in every decision they make. That it be first what you would want, secondly, what's best for our community. And thank you in the past for what's already been done. And we know you're going to keep your hand on them. Bless everything in this meeting tonight, Lord, that it go the way you'd want it to. And we will remember to give you the praise, honor, and glory. We ask it in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. We have a, this evening, we have an Eagle Scout with us. Mr. Foy?
Alrighty, sir. Mr. Mayor, would you like to adopt-
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm out of order here.
It's okay.
Let me, let me, let me adopt the agenda, if I may. I do make a motion that we adopt the agenda for this evening.
Mayor Crawford, I'd like to make an addition to the agenda.
Yes, sir.
It's been suggested I just put it right at the top. It'll be very short. But I would like to talk about the traffic at the school and the NCDOT project at the intersection of Angel Pardee Road and US 158.
So we'll make it nine A new business, under new business?
Sure.
Nine A. Still, I'm getting in order here. Okay, now we move on. We have recognition this evening for our Eagle Scout. Mr. Foy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The town of Stokesdale has so many talented young individuals in this town. We had the pleasure roughly about, I don't know, six months ago of recognizing Mr. Andrew Neesel for the Eagle Scout project he did here at our town park. In the over one mile of nature trails that he and the scouts involved were able to construct and build. And they're used every day by our citizens. We have a great project from Mr. Jake Delvo. Jake is a Northwest Guilford Junior, lives right here in Stokesdale. He's on the varsity football team, has been very involved with scouting with Troop 600 for nearly a decade. And he just completed his Eagle Scout project. Jake is extremely talented. Before I get into the merits of his project, I'll tell you a funny story about Jake and his family. And Jake doesn't, don't know I'm going to share this, but a couple of years ago, Jake and his family, we were, we were together in the neighborhood. And just Jake casually talking to Jake, and there was a basketball goal behind us. And Jake threw the ball over his shoulder about thirty feet from the basketball goal, and it went in. So I was like, you couldn't do that again if you tried a hundred more times. He picks the ball up, throws it over his shoulder, not looking at the rim or anything, and makes it again. So, so extremely talented. But Jake had a phenomenal Eagle Scout project. And to share that project with you, I'm simply going to read from the Facebook post from Scouting America. Scouting America is the national Facebook page for the scouts. They have over a half million followers. And Jake was specifically recognized on the Facebook page. And I think all Stokesdale citizens, you know, are very proud of him. I know his family is. And we've enjoyed getting to know the Delvos for sure. So if I may read that, today we congratulate, this is from Scouting America. "Today we congratulate and thank new Eagle Scout Jacob Delvo of Stokesdale, North Carolina, of Troop 600 located in Oak Ridge, North Carolina. Eager to complete a project that helps the whole community, Jacob created two freestanding dryers for firefighter gear. The two machines dry the expensive firefighter gear quickly, efficiently, and without damage. That's not all. Jacob's hard work will impact all firefighters across the Greensboro, North Carolina, community. Jacob's going to give us plans for the freestanding dryers, and we can make some of these ourselves, explains Deputy Chief Dwayne Church of Greensboro Fire Department." That would be a huge impact all across the city of Greensboro. As we honor Jacob, we thank every scout and venturing scouts of America, Sea Scouts, Cub Scouts, and all Scouting America programs for working to make the world a better place and help those in need. And certainly, that's what Jacob's project did. It's a remarkable project. And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, like to call Jacob, and let's recognize him and give him a plaque for his great work.
Jacob. Let's go to the center. Dad, catch camera. Jacob. Present you with this plaque. Congratulations.
Wonderful. Thank you. Good job, Jacob.
I would ask, after review of the minutes, that we adopt the minutes.
Mayor, if I might interrupt you.
Yes, sir.
Maybe I missed it, but did we vote to approve the agenda?
Yes, sir. Did we not?
We did.
I don't believe there was a vote. I believe-
I just mentioned it, didn't I?
We made a change.
We did. We made the change, and there was no motion to adopt it.
There was no motion. Okay.
But so moved.
Second.
And I'm aye? I'm aye. Mr. Jones?
I'm aye.
Mr. Lynn? Forgive me.
No, no problem. I was just making sure I wasn't having a senior moment.
What are you trying to say? Okay.
I don't think you're saying-
Do I?
I said I don't think you're saying.
Review. Oh, pretty obvious, huh? Let's, let's review and adopt the minutes. I make a motion that we adopt the minutes for June 12th, 2025, regular town council meeting.
That's the second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Foy?
I'm aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
I am aye.
And I am aye. I make a motion that we adopt the minutes for September the 11th, 2025, regular town council meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
There's, there's a couple of minor changes that Mr. Wagner and I talked about before this meeting. And I just think it'd be easier if we postpone approving these minutes until the November meeting.
Okay. I have no problem with that. I'll withdraw my motion.
If everybody's agreeable.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, now we move to the public safety reports. Stokesdale Fire Department. I have. Let's see. I'll take the liberty of doing this one. Below are the currently monthly stats for our department, the fire department. The medical related incidents were fifty, fire related thirteen. Other incidents were twenty-six, a total of eighty-nine. And Mr. Golden thanks us for it. Next item is the Guilford County Sheriff's Office. Mr. Wagner, would you like to do that one?
Be glad to. So this is the Guilford County Sheriff's Office report provided by Sergeant Ryan Seals of the District One Office. For the month of September, the Sheriff's Office responded to one hundred and sixty-nine calls for service in the Stokesdale Town Limits that resulted in fifteen case reports. Of note, on September the 12th, deputies took a report of a theft of a motor vehicle in the 8200 block of Barbello Court, in which a victim had a Jeep Wrangler stolen from outside their residence. With the assistance of the Greensboro Police Department and the Rockhampton County Sheriff's Office, a forty-seven-year-old male from Greensboro was identified as the offender in a series of car thefts that day. And he was charged with one felony count of larceny of motor vehicle. The victim's vehicle was recovered in Rockhampton County. On September the 26th, deputies took several vandalism calls in the Hunt Cliff neighborhood along Bartonshire Drive and Kristen Drive, in which multiple vehicles were keyed and mailbox were damaged. Utilizing surveillance footage from several residents, a twenty-three-year-old male in the neighborhood was identified as the offender, and he was arrested for multiple warrants for misdemeanor damage to personal property. We took multiple fraud reports throughout the month of residents falling victim to phone scams of subjects claiming to be deputies in the sheriff's office and advising them that they could pay money in order to take care of warrant for arrest or for missing jury duty or other legal processes. Victims were told that by the scammers to make cash deposits in Bitcoin ATMs at various locations. We'd like to remind residents that no law enforcement agency will ever contact you seeking money or gift cards to address the legal process. If you receive such a call, please hang up. And hang up on the subjects and call the non-emergency number at Guilford Metro 911 at 336-373-2222, and ask to speak with a deputy. And then we'll go over the calls by type. This is the type of call. Upon initial dispatch, call nature was often changed after further investigation upon deputy arrival. Numbers denote on the map indicate multiple calls to service in the same location. One burglary of a vehicle, two disturbance, twelve alarm, one alcohol, two assault, eight domestic, three weapons offense, one warrant, five vandalism, three theft, twenty-six traffic, two fraud, one missing person, two motor vehicle theft, one noise violation, five accident, seventy-six other, seventeen suspicious, and one stolen property. And that's all for the sheriff's office report. If there's any questions.
Thank you, Robbie. We'll move on to the administrative reports. Town Administrator, Mr. Robbie Wagner?
Yeah. I'll start off with the water system report. This is provided by Ms. Priscilla Hunsucker. For water meters installed, there were three, forty-two water meters in stock, five applications for transfer of service, and water meters are in, eighteen work orders or applications on hold for builders, seventy-two 811s, eight hundred and eighty-seven water bills mailed out, and nineteen reservations or rentals. I guess the big updates that I'd focus on tonight is, of course, we're moving along with the AIA and the pre-construction planning grant project. Just a reminder that Hazen and Sawyer has provided the town with options for the pre-construction planning grant project as far as SCADA and a control valve. So they're just awaiting direction from council to move forward with that. Another big update is on the Coldwater Road Waterline Extension Project. Hazen and Sawyer has completed the bid documents, and it went out for bids Monday. It's been advertised for bids, I should say. They've put it in the news and record, reached out to local contractors. We've put it on our website here, put it on the Facebook here, printed copies out, tried to get the word out to as many people. I spoke with Andy just before the meeting today, and he did share that as far as the easements go for this property, there have been maps created. In my report, I mentioned that you guys would have them by the seventeenth. Those have been submitted to Hazen today, so you'll get them next week, much sooner than we originally thought. So it will then go to Gulf Coast to start working on their scope of work. Also add that five contractors have already requested the plans and the specs for this project. So we haven't obviously received bids yet, but they have shown interest. So that's where we are with the Coldwater Road Extension Project. Another item I'll add is that on October the third, Mr. Foy and I had met with Michael Anderson of the Teneamit Company out at the water tower, the elevated water tank, to discuss the condition of the tank. And no better person to speak to than the person that works for the company that makes the paint. So I had reached out to him before this meeting and hadn't got the update just yet. But he is working on an update, letting us know what his professional opinion is on that tank, what your options are. You know, there's some obvious fading on there that you can see for the eye level. But he's gonna, he brought a machine with him that takes it a little bit deeper, so that's where we are with that. So any, and that's pretty much it. Like I said, there's tons in here. But if you have any questions about a specific item, I'll be glad to touch on it.
Any questions?
Not at this time for me.
Thank you, Robbie.
Thanks, Robbie.
You're welcome.
Do you have anything to report from the planning board?
Yeah, I can just give a brief update here. So at the last planning board meeting, there were two matters considered. One was a conditional zoning case for the very item that you'll be hearing tonight. That was the rezoning from Ag to conditional heavy industrial at Walter Combs Way, 8299 Walter Combs Way. And the planning board did vote in favor of recommending approval of that to the planning, to the town council. And then also, the planning board heard a site plan review case for a storage unit facility on NC Highway 68, and they did deny that request. And the next regular meeting of the planning board will take place on October the 23rd. And at that meeting, there will be a public hearing to discuss the remaining proposed updates to the development ordinance.
Anything else?
That's it for the planning board.
Any questions? Thank you, Robbie. I will mention that Councilman Rigsby is not with us this evening. Do you by chance have anything on the property committee?
Yeah, I'll be glad to speak on that. We have a new refrigerator now, so thank council for approving that. Priscilla was able to wheel and deal and get us a good deal on our new fridge and hauling off the old one. So we have a refrigerator, and if any of you are handy with doorstops, we need to find a way to prevent the kitchen door from hitting this new fridge because it's a little bit bigger. So that's, that's all for the property committee that I am aware of at this time, unless you have anything to add.
Okay, very good. Town Park Improvement Committee Chairman T. Stevenson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We did not have any meetings of the committee last month, and we do not have a meeting scheduled for this month. We are approaching the end of the project that is ongoing now, the fence project. We do have an estimated date for the rosebushes to be installed by October the 25th, and that will complete that project. The only outstanding project is really a repair versus an improvement, and that is the door to the bulletin board down in front of the concession stand. We do have one quote for a replacement door. However, one won't do it. We'll need a couple more, so we're waiting on those. Other than that, that will complete any of the ongoing projects or issues or items that we've been involved in. And like I said, we don't have any meetings scheduled for the upcoming month. Once we do get the quotes for the bulletin board, then we will have a special called meeting and discuss that and be able to bring something forward to the council. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you, T.
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate this opportunity.
Financial reports. Ms. Thacker?
Good evening. We will start with the general fund as usual. And I walked out of my door and left my laptop, so just forgive me. I'm going old school here. Okay, the general fund for the Bank of Oak Ridge, our SEDARs. As of September 30th, 2025, we have $2,957,069.63. Our total bank accounts, which also include the SEDARs, is $3,250,816.99. Our total accounts receivable is $11,715.90. Our accounts payable is $952.96. For the general fund, the interest year-to-date is $28,005.18. Our total year-to-date for the general fund for shared overhead expense that we are reimbursed by the Water Enterprise account is $37,819.84. And that's all that I have for the general fund. We'll move to the water. Our total SEDARs in the Water Enterprise account is $1,629,691.35. Our total bank accounts, which include our SEDARs, is $2,998,539.28. Our accounts receivable for water sales, and this does include the September billing, is $45,344.49. There are zero inactive and active ninety-day plus past due. Our sales tax refund due to the Water Enterprise account at this time is $2.43. Our accounts payables for the Water Enterprise is $69,315.74. The total interest for year-to-date for the Water Enterprise account is $20,821.45. Our capacity fees collected for this fiscal year-to-date is $4,000. And that's all that I have for the water, unless there are any questions.
Let me ask about the, the general fund. The balance that we have at fidelity is $270,000. Is that normal, that we keep that kind of balance on hand?
Well, we just, we did just move $100,000 from that last month into a SEDAR.
But that's reflected in that number, is that not?
It's, it's in, yes. That is, yes, that is after the removal of the $100,000. Now-
Would it not be prudent to move some of that?
We could. It does, I mean, it does make me nervous at times, but you know, to go below $200,000 in there, I would be a little nervous, only because I just like that cushion-
How much is, how large an expenditure have you ever had? Just off, just out of the, out of that general fund? Have you, have you spent $200,000 in a month?
No, absolutely not.
The largest water repair we've ever had was around $80,000.
And shouldn't that come out of the-
Correct. Yeah, this is the general fund. He's, he's-
The water.
Yeah, I'm just saying, that's the biggest-
I would just say, if you haven't, if you haven't had anywhere near that kind of cash flow out of that account, I would think that that money would be, would serve us better and serve the town better if we had it in a CDR.
Well, you're the council.
Mike, is there a tar, is there a target number that you'd like to see that at?
No, I just-
I mean, I'm not disagreeing with anything you're saying at all, but just as a general.
You have to understand, I go back to the days when you could write a check, and it seemed to take a few days before the recipient ever got it cashed. And call it float, call it kiting, call it whatever you want to call it. But, and I know, I realize that we're not in that situation. So I'm used to keeping a fairly small balance and letting the money work for us. I don't know what that target number is.
Okay. Now, it's-
But I would think $100,000 out of that.
I don't either. Just-
I would think $100,000 out of that shouldn't be a problem. That leaves you with, that leaves you with $170,000.
I, I agree with what you're saying in premise, and if we, for some reason, have a problem, we will know about it, and-
You can always pull the CD. I mean, you can, you can cash it with penalty.
We'll pay a penalty, you know, we'll be penalized.
I mean, that's, that's the risk you take.
It is. Well, you're counsel.
Rather than having this conversation maybe repeatedly, should we come to maybe a target level to give Kim some guidance where she can, you know, kind of target?
Is there, you reckon there's any particular percentage that the school of government folks would recommend for a small little town such as theirselves?
No, there's nothing-
The rule of thumb.
I think it would be a percent, i-if there is, and I don't know the answer to your question, I would think it would be a total percentage of, of the budget itself. But I'm, I'm not uncomfortable with the number, but I also acknowledge and do, do see Mike's point.
Again, the largest, you know, unbudgeted, unexpected expense I have witnessed here was that $80,000 water system repair.
Yeah, and that's in the water.
But it's still town money, though, to be ready for.
No, no, I get it.
A hundred?
How about we do a-
That's what I'm saying, a hundred. Let's move a hundred at least.
I, I would say, let's do a hundred and try it, you know, upon-
The worst of it is, we pay that-
I think, I think that's reasonable. Now, now, we are coming off where we just received roughly a $75,000 deposit from the state, which we receive every quarter, the franchise fees is what we call it. So the balance in itself will work itself down. I think we have room, but I think, you know, we should just keep an eye on it, as you suggest, and-
Absolutely.
There, there's nothing, no, nothing bad can happen with trying it.
Yeah. I would say, I would say, Kim, if you, if you hit the $100,000 mark as a balance, you might want to say something to somebody.
Oh, I will.
Yeah. If you get, if you, if you hit that number as a balance-
Yeah, I definitely, yeah.
But I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion that you move $100,000 out of there into the CDRs.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Okay.
If you're concerned about a hundred, it's likely we will-
I'm not.
Okay, well, you said to let us know if it is a hundred.
No, if she, if she drops to a hundred in her balance, that means she's moving seventy. That means that's all, she's nervous dropping it below $270,000. I'm saying if it drops-
I'm nervous. I'm talking about with the 200, only because, you know, I just like the cushion there. So I know it's money we have access to versus, but if you, if you want to keep it at 170, then okay.
It, it, it will work itself down, and then December, we'll get another deposit.
We will.
Exactly.
They come every quarter.
Yeah, so I, let's do a hundred. Let's do a hundred and see how it-
I got a motion, I got a second. Any further discussion? Motion is for $100,000 to be moved?
Into a, into a SEDAR account at the Bank of Oak Ridge?
Yes, to a CDR.
Break it up, so if we have to use some of it, we don't have to take it all and lose them.
It's not a bad idea. You do 20,000 increments or 50,000 increments.
Yeah.
We, we have, we have smaller SEDARs, I think, with them.
We do.
If you have smaller already that you have access to, my suggestion would be, put the, if there's a, if there is a dollar amount that gives us a better bang, then keep it as high as you can, as opposed to doing five twenties or two fifties. Do you understand what I'm saying?
You suggest two years on this as well?
Two year? I would say so.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's prudent, and I think we're looking at a couple, you know, adjustments by the Fed possibly by the end of the year, a couple more than the one they just did.
If that's an amendment to the motion, I will accept the amendment. Mayor?
Yes, okay.
I'll do two fifties at two years each.
You're not aware of any, any difference in the rate, interest rate, based on the dollar amount of the-
No, it's the year, it's the amount of time.
I'm showing my age again. Senior moment. Okay. All right, I have a motion and I have a second. Call for the vote, Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I'm also aye. I'm sorry, go ahead. Kim, with the rest of the report, or are you through?
I'm through.
Are you through? Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, we're going to open it up for public comment. I'll call on a few folks first off. Let's see. Ms. Coroner, Connor, Darlene Connor? If you would, step to our podium. If you would, identify yourself and your address.
Darlene Connor, 8194 Spring Birch Drive.
Thank you.
I just wanted to remind everyone that next month is Veterans Day, and I'd like to see a few more people there at the ceremony. Doesn't seem like too many people show up for as many people as there are. There's a lot of veterans here in Stokesdale, so just wanted to extend the invite to everyone on the board and, and so.
What is, what is, what's the scheduled event? What are you, you're asking, you're inviting us to something?
Yes, the Veterans Day.
Right.
On Veterans Day, November 11th. Yes, at the memorial.
At what time?
I believe it's-
Two, two.
Two o'clock, yeah.
Okay.
And it's the twentieth anniversary of the event.
Yeah.
And for those that may not know, that's at Vulcan Materials.
Yes.
Right.
Stokesdale, right?
Excellent.
And they did, they just have a new, the new area concreted and had that redone.
Okay.
So everything's-
Can we, can we put that on our Facebook page?
And they added Space Force.
We'll add it to our Facebook page, for sure.
I'm not on Facebook, but-
Well, you people are.
I just wanted to remind everybody, I know that with it coming up, it'll be before the meeting, so, next month, so.
And we have, we have it on our webpage as well.
Okay.
Good. Very good.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Billy Queen, if you would, please step forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Billy Queen. I'm running for sheriff of Guilford County, but I'm not here to talk about that tonight. I attended the Guilford County Commissioners' meeting that was relevant to our taxes, possibility of it going up forty-six percent here. Uh, there were several people there that were advocating for you. And, and then pretty much we're making a comparison between Wake County, Mecklenburg County, and Guilford County. And as that, a lot of you already know, Guilford County's taking a beating on the taxes. But that seemingly makes no difference to the county commissioners because they are looking at possibly a forty-six percent increase in, uh, property valuation. And if they don't remain, uh, revenue neutral, your property taxes could go up by that forty-six percent. The reason that I went up there and addressed them, um, was because there's a certain group of people in our county out here that can't afford that. There's no way they can come close to that kind of an increase in their taxes. And I told Mr. Skip Austin, uh, I addressed it to him because he was the one advocating saying that property owners are just going to have to pay a little bit more. And a little bit more could mean forty-six percent. And I told him, well, forget about, uh, us already taking a beating compared to, uh, Wake County and Mecklenburg County, but think about the people that are living right on the edge right now, what you're going to do to them. Because if you think, if you're, you raise your taxes on property out here, those property owners are going to have to pass that tax increase down to the people that can least afford it, the ones that can barely bear, uh, buy food for their kids and keep their kids warm. And so I told Skip Austin at the end, you think about those children that'll go to bed cold. You think about those children that'll go to bed without dinner because you felt like the property owners should pay just a little bit more. And, uh, I left it at that, but I want you to do everything that you can do. Get a letter writing campaign going saying, "We cannot afford it," and send it directly to Skip Austin. And that's what I had to say tonight, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Billy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
This council member thanks you for going and speaking for the property owners. Thank you.
Thank you. I might mention this too. For property owners, you want to be sure that whatever evaluation they currently have is accurate. This is one of the things that, that we were cautioned about. We attended, Mr. Foye and I attended a meeting, um, that, that, uh, hit on this, this very subject. And one of the things, I believe you were, is this the meeting we attended? Am I speaking out?
No, no, sir, you're, you're good.
Okay. Um, but one of the things that they pointed out was to be sure the evaluations are correct, the current evaluations. Because if they tell you you're going to get a forty percent increase, that's easy enough to calculate on what you're, what you're paying now.
It's, it's not forty percent across the board. One, you know, there could be one property that would be, you know, ten percent. There could be another property that would go up a hundred percent, and the projected average of all that is, is forty-seven percent.
That's right, exactly.
You know, kind of to, to Mr. Queen's point, uh, it seemed like when they did a reevaluation, uh, was it twenty-two? It, it was pretty recently. Uh, i- i- it hit Stokesdale hard, you know, in, you know, it hit, it the whole county hard, but I also share Mr. Queen's concerns about, uh, really with everything he just said. It, it, it is really a big deal. It, 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 it's huge. And, and Mr. Queen alluded to, to Mecklenburg and, uh, and, and Wake County, you know, Throforsyth County and kind of the peer counties to, to Guilford County. And just, just compare their tax rate to our, you know, point seven three zero five that we're paying now. It is much, much lower, or they are much, much lower than those, those counties. So, you know, we do need a revenue neutral or as close to it as possible rate. That's seventy-three point seven three of, uh, anyway. It's, thank you, Mr. Queen.
Well, Mr. Foye, I, I, I want to throw in my two cents worth here just to say this in case there's somebody out there that doesn't know. The county finance officer, tax director, whoever that may be, is required by general statute to prepare a revenue neutral budget, no matter what the increase is. And so it's not like the county commissioners all do not know what they'd have to tax say, tax that to take then the same amount of revenue they did the previous year. And, you know, so just want to make everybody aware of that. That figure is available.
Yes, sir.
It's good, good news, good news to have. Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Queen. Next up, Molly Byrd with our friends of Stokesdale.
Evening, Molly.
Howdy. Molly Byrd, I'm here on behalf of Friends of Stokesdale. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who came to our Farmers' Day, uh, on September the twentieth. From what I've heard from everyone, um, everybody had a good time. I think the biggest event, I, I regret that Chief Golden is not here because the big event of the day was the fire truck pull. And thanks to him, we had a fire truck to pull. And, uh, you know, of course, all the kids enjoyed the bounce house that we were able to provide this year. But, um, just wanted to thank everyone, especially our sponsors who helped us, uh, finance the, uh, event. We couldn't do it without them every year, so I wanted to say thank you to those folks as well. I also wanted to thank, um, Mayor, um...
Mike will work. Mayor Mike.
Yeah, there we go, Mike and Tim and, um, T for coming out this past Tuesday night for... It's nothing on you. I do that all the time, forget people's names. But anyway, um, appreciate y'all coming out for our meet and greet. I regret that, you know, more of our twenty-five hundred followers, Facebook followers didn't come out to see you all and talk to you all the other night. But, um, you know, I was, we were glad to provide the opportunity for people to do that. Uh, so we'll see you in another couple of years, and maybe we'll have a bigger crowd. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We do appreciate you putting the events on very, very much, and I'm glad you did have a good turnout. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak? If not, we're going to move on. We have a, uh, we have a public hearing notice. I'm going to call the public hearing, uh, open. This is a conditional zoning case. We have with us this evening Ms. Darby Terrell from, um, the planning, uh, folks in Guilford County. Darby, can I just turn this over to you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, today I will be presenting the conditional zoning case. That is, uh, case number two-five dash zero-nine dash P L B D dash zero-zero-one-three-three. This is a portion of eighty-two ninety-nine Walter Combs Way from agriculture to, uh, conditionally zoned high, or I, I, I apologize, heavy industrial. The subject property is point eight-one acre portion of the lot located at eighty-two ninety-nine Walter Combs Way. That is Guilford County Tax Parcel number two-two-zero-five-five-four in Bruce Township. It's immediately south of the intersection of Walter Combs Way and US Highway one fifty-eight. There are no history of denied cases for this parcel. The nature of the, of request, the subject property was annexed into the town of Stokesdale as a result of ordinance number O dash two-O-two-five dash zero-four effective September eleventh, twenty-twenty-five. The subject property was zoned, um, agriculture within Guilford County Zoning District per, uh, per NCGS, uh, one sixty-D dash, uh, two-O-two-G. The county's, um, agricultural zoning will remain in effect until A, the town of Stokesdale applies initial zoning to the property, or B, a period of sixty days has elapsed following the annexa- annexation, whichever is sooner. Therefore, the subject property will become unzoned on November tenth, twenty-twenty-five, which is sixty days from the effective date of the annexation, um, if the town of Stokesdale does not apply initial zoning to that property. Uh, this request is to apply initial zoning of conditional zone, uh, heavy industrial, uh, to the subject property, the subject to the conditions offered by the property owner as indicated below, the proposed, uh, CZ dash HI zoning district matches the zoning of the remaining four-point-eight-four acres of the parcel. And that is, uh, case number two-five dash zero-two dash P L B D dash zero-zero-one-zero-seven, which was effective April first, uh, twenty-one, um, of twenty-twenty-five. Um, the Stokesdale Town Council does have the final authority to approve or deny this request. Um, the town of Stokesdale also may propose additional conditions, but the property owner must consent and writing to those conditions. Um, those conditions that they have requested with this conditional zoning are, uh, number one, horticultural specialties under agriculture uses, um, accessory uses and, uh, structures, um, which are two accessory uses and structures customary. Uh, three is caretaker dwelling, four is emergency shelter, five is recycling collection point, six is satellite dish and communication tower, seven is ambulance service, eight is fire station, nine, government office, ten, police station, uh, neighborhood, eleven is post office. The next is business professional and personal service uses, oh, twelve is engineering, architect or survey service, uh, thirteen is equipment rental and leasing with outside storage, fourteen is equipment repair heavy, fifteen, equipment repair light, sixteen, landscape and horticultural services, seventeen, truck and utility trailer rental and leasing light, eighteen, truck, tractor and semi rental and leasing heavy. Uh, the next use is retail trade, uh, nineteen, which is building supply sales with storage yard. Uh, the next section is wholesale trade with, uh, use number twenty, agriculture products, um, other. Twenty-one is farm supplies, other, twenty-two, flowers, nursery, stock and florist supplies. Twenty-three, forest products, twenty-four, hardware, twenty-five lumber and other construction materials. Transportation and warehousing and utilities, um, those services would be twenty-six, recycling processing centers, twenty-seven, raw material hauling, twenty-eight, utility company office, twenty-nine, utility equipment and storage yards, thirty, utility lines and related appar- I don't know how to pronounce that, I apologize.
Yeah.
Appurtenances, thank you, I apologize. Uh, thirty-one, uh, utility services facility, no outside storage. Thirty-two, utility substation, thirty-three, warehouse, general storage enclosed. Um, the next section is manufacturing industrial uses, those uses being thirty-four, concrete, cut stone and clay products. Thirty-five, contractors with no outside storage, thirty-six contracts, contractors, general building. Thirty-seven, contractors, heavy construction, thirty-eight, contractors, special trade, thirty-nine, wood containers, forty, wood products miscellaneous. Um, and the last, uh, group of uses for this, forty-one, temporary construction, storage or office, a real estate sales or rental office with concurrent building permit for permanent building, and forty-two, Christmas tree sales. There were no development conditions, um, requested in this, uh, zoning, uh, zoning request. To kind of skip down and briefly go over the character of the area, um, this current parcel is vacant. Their surrounding uses to this parcel, to the north, it's undeveloped, um, utility and wholesale. To the south is also undeveloped, to, to the east is undeveloped and residential, and to the west it's self stor- storage. And to go into the transportation of the existing conditions, um, for Walter Combs Way, there was no, uh, traffic count from DOT, um, specifically for, uh, US Highway one fifty-eight, there was seven thousand five hundred trips per a, uh, twenty-twenty-two NCDOT count. And to go specifically to the consistency, uh, with the land use for this, uh, requested zoning, looking at the Stokesdale Future Land Use Plan, um, two thousand and seven, the plan recommended professional and manufacturing corridor for this area. Uh, the professional manufacturing corridor is planned to provide an area for the growth of office space and light manufacturing services. That is consistent with current uses. This corridor would start at the eastern edge of the town core on US Highway one fifty-eight, follow US Highway one fifty-eight east and ter- terminate at the intersection of US one fifty-eight and US two twenty. The northern and southern borders of the professional manufacturing corridor are identical to the borders of the scenic corridor. Uh, currently, this portion of US Highway one fifty-eight contains industrial highway business, office, residential and agricultural areas. Uh, no new industrial areas are proposed due to the number of areas currently zoned but undeveloped. Uh, the plan recommends that the town extend its eastern city limits to the intersection of US Highway one fifty-eight and US two twenty. Uh, this expansion will allow consistent development within this area. Um, so with the consistently, specifically with this requested, the proposed zoning is consistent with the Stokesdale Future Land Use Plan recommendation of professional manufacturing corridor. And specifically, um, for the reasonableness for this request, the request to apply an initial zoning of conditionally zoned heavy industrial to the subject property is reasonable because the proposed zoning would match the existing zoning of the remainder of the lot, which com- compromises that four-point-eight-four acres. Additionally, there are several other industrially or commercially zoned properties in the immediate vicinity of the subject property. The proposed conditional zoning district would also permit many commercial industrial uses which have the potential to be, benefit the community through the creation of jobs and provisions of goods and services. Um, staff, um, has recommended to approve this, uh, zoning. Um, and if it was to be, um, approved by Town Council, there would not be an amendment to the future land use map.
Great, thank you, Darlene.
Excellent. You have a motion for us there?
Open up the public hearing.
We got a public hearing. We do that. It's better if I follow instructions.
Oh, good. Those that want to speak in favor.
I know. I'm going to declare the public hearing is open for anyone that would like to speak in favor of this rezoning.
And I will add, the owner of the property had reached out to me prior to the meeting and just wanted me to, uh, remind, and they had asked the question if, if council had the, the question, and I said, "It's in their packet." There is a letter of consent in your packets where the property owner has consented to the conditions of this, um, rezoning, essentially this initial zoning. So that does exist. Now, if you add any more tonight, different story, but as, as written, they've been consented to by the property owner.
Okay, thank you. Is there any, uh, anyone who would like, would like to speak against the, uh, rezoning? If there's no one in opposition, I declare the meeting closed. Public hearing is closed, and I'll call for a motion.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I have a motion. Uh, to approve case two-five zero-nine P L B D zero-zero-one-three-three for property located eight, at eighty-two ninety-nine Walter Combs Way for an initial zoning of CZ HI, which stands for Conditional Use Heavy Industrial. Uh, this is based on the Planning Board's approval, that it's in the public interest. Staff, uh, recommended approval, uh, that this falls within the town's manufacturing corridor as outlined in the town's land use plan and is consistent with the zoning in neighboring properties.
I'll second the motion.
Is there any discussion? Call for a vote, Mr. Oh, sorry?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like for the minutes to note that this particular property, uh, was just outside of Stokesdale when the applicant bought this property, and it was a little parcel that was orphaned when they reconfigured the road many years ago. Uh, Jimmy's probably the only one here that might necessarily remember. But anyway, that's where the point eight-two acres came from, and this council has rezoned the adjoining property and had, had several meetings and, uh, heard from the applicant, et cetera, et cetera. So this is almost a housekeeping matter. But this, this, to simplify things and make everything consistent, uh, I think this is a terrific thing for us to be doing, is getting the entire parcel into Stokesdale rather than having a, a little section of it hanging out into Guilford County.
Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. Mr. Foye?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith? Mr. Landrith.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
And I am also aye. We're going to move to new business. This is the Stokesdale Elementary School. Mr. Jones, if you'd like to, well, let me, let me speak first, if I may.
You go right ahead.
Got a call this morning from our local school board representative. The project for providing the turning lane and the necessary traffic controls to reduce the problem that we've experienced at the elementary school has been approved. They are letting the contracts, I understand they, I'm not, I wasn't too clear if the, if the contractor has been chosen at this point. Derek.
I don't know the specifics of that, other than it came in under the half billion dollar threshold that would require-
It was below that, yeah.
-board approval. So this is very much in motion.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, it's very likely going to happen. And Mr. Jones has some additional information, which leads me to believe this is going to happen fairly soon. Once it starts, they have 45 days to get it finished. So we're not talking about a year's project here. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had an opportunity to speak with Jennifer Britt, who's one of the engineers working on the NC DOT portion of this, the stoplight that'll be installed at Angel Park View and US 158. And it'll be in, they'll have to also work on the intersection at Athens Road. And she provided a, just a rudimentary map that council has, just kind of sketching out what they're going to do. And she emphasized that this may be subject to change. But the good news for me was that she said that they were going to endeavor to get this done and get the asphalt laid before cold weather. So that means they're coming pretty soon. So I think it's a cross your fingers kind of thing for us, but I know all the folks up there in the school traffic, dropping off kids and picking up kids will be excited, I think. I did remind her about the, you know, the peak traffic there that they would have to work around. And she said, well, yeah, we're well aware of it. So I said, well, just checking. So that is, that is it.
Okay, that's informational. Next item is consideration of a town of Stokesdale Resolution Number R 2025-06, a resolution consenting to the addition of Field Stream Drive and Blackthorn Drive in the Rachel's Landing subdivision to the secondary road system, maintenance road sys-, maintenance system of North Carolina.
All right. Mr. Mayor, this is my, my agenda item. Happy for our friends in the Rachel's Landing subdivision. That subdivision has been working for several years to, to, to bring their roads up to a standard where DOT would, would accept that. And everything appears to be good to go now. I'm going to make a motion to pass Resolution R 2025-06. Excuse me, guys, I lost my spot here. Authorizing the streets of Field Stream Drive and Blackthorn Drive in the Rachel's Landing subdivision to go into the state road maintenance system.
I'll second.
Any discussion? I have a motion, I have a, I have a motion and I have a second. I'll call for the vote. Mr. Foy.
I'm aye.
Mr. Landrith.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
I'm aye.
And I'm also aye. Our next item is consideration of proposal for contracted water meter reading services. Mr. Foy, I believe you have this?
I do, sir, thank you. I'm going to read, I'm going to read a letter from Yates Construction into the minutes. As, as we know, that Yates Construction has been our historical company that reads the town's water meters each month to get us the figures to Priscilla for water billing. The letter says, to Stokesdale Town Council, it's dated October the 7th, 2025. Yates Construction Company, as you well know, is going through some changes and reviewing our ongoing workload with the town, along with other business partners we do work for. While not leaving the town and assisting with normal water system maintenance, we are looking at asking the town to consider our employee, Leslie Gaines, to take over the monthly meter reading under her own business. Leslie has been doing the actual read since Yates took over the task years ago. And it seems like a logical solution as we try to streamline our day-to-day operations. She has remarkable knowledge in handling the task on her, along with her husband Doug, who also has worked on the system since day one, and both have a wealth of knowledge in operating their other businesses outside of Yates. Your consideration of the matter would be greatly appreciated. So the company that Leslie and her husband Doug have set up is, is called Atlantis Underwater Services. They have filled out the town's vendor, the vendor sheet, provided certificate of liability insurance. Certainly, she has been doing the job as a Yates employee for years. So a contract has been drafted up, and I am going to make a motion that with pending Attorney Chuck Winfrey's green light, that the town of Stokesdale enter into a contract with Atlantis Underwater Services. The contract is dated October the 9th, 2025, to allow them to do our water meetings, water reader, water meter readings for the town of Stokesdale.
I'll second.
Discussion? May I ask what we're currently paying for this service?
I've got some questions for Mr. Winfrey, whenever it's appropriate.
It's a fair question.
May I ask, let me ask the question about, what are we currently paying for this?
So right now, you're paying $1,400 per month.
So it's staying the same? Is this, and this is an annual contract?
It's, well, it's a contract, you pay it on a monthly basis, so you would be invoiced monthly. The contract, it doesn't have a termination unless the, either party wants to terminate.
So it would, it was, it's going to roll each year?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Mr. Jones?
And I would like to, and my, good, thanks for the reminder, I'd like to include in my motion, the amounts, the $1,400 a month. And also note that there is no price change in that.
Okay.
Mr. Landrith, you concur?
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Just some housekeeping questions I have here, Mr. Winfrey. Have you looked at this already?
Yes.
Okey-doke. The quote that we have is from Mr. Doug Gaines, and yet the insurance is in the name of Atlantis Underwater Services. And so is the EIN number from the IRS, and so is the vendor registration with the town of Stokesdale. Is, do we need to make any additions or changes here and so that all the paperwork's consistent, Mr. Winfrey? And is Atlantis Under, Underwater Services, is that an LLC corporation? Or is it Doug Gaines and Leslie doing business as Atlantic Underwater Services?
No, it is a, it is a formed LLC, and, and Mr. Gaines is the manager of that.
Managing, managing member.
Of the LLC.
Did he sign something somewhere to that effect?
I think it was following the Secretary of State's office.
No, I was talking about a quote with us signed.
So just, just a point, a clarification. My motion was, did not specify Mr. Gaines or Leslie, his wife. It was for Atlantis Underwater Services.
Yeah, I, I got that part, but I'm just saying that the paperwork is not necessarily consistent, and I want to make sure Mr. Winfrey reviews this, just to keep us out of the weeds, so we don't have a problem down the road.
Yep. And, and Mr. Gaines is not personally responsible for it, the LLC that he's manager of is, is responsible for this performance.
So the contract we're entering into is with the LLC and not the individuals?
Correct, that's right.
Okay, the, the other thing that I'm looking at here, I've got the certificate of liability insurance in my hand, and I see where they have commercial general liability, but I don't see the automobile liability coverage. Is, does the town have any exposure, Mr. Winfrey, if they're using their company vehicle, going up and down the road, reading all these meters? And heaven forbid, some accident occur. Are, are we good? You know, do we need to specify that they use any particular markings on their vehicle? You know, flashy lights, any of that sort of stuff? Or can we leave all that up to them? Are we good?
Yeah, I think we're better off leaving that up to them, because the more we supervise and tell them how to do it, then the more exposure we have for anything that happens. So.
Perfect.
So we'll, but they're, they're an independent contractor under this agreement, and they do other work apart from what they're doing for us. So I don't think there's any issue about their being a common law employee. And so I think we're, we're covered. Anything that happens is on them. They're just our, our contractor.
Any further discussion?
No, I'm good.
I have a motion and I have a second. I'll call for the vote. Mr. Foy.
Aye.
Mr. Landrith.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
And I am also aye. Our next item is consideration of the fall 2025 bulk item drop-off event with GFL Environmental at Stokesdale Town Hall. Mr. Foy?
In concurrence with our contract with GFL, the town of Stokesdale offers the service of bulk waste disposal twice a year. GFL is available to drop the open tops here, just very similar to last time. I believe it went very smooth. The dates are October 20th, which is on a Monday, through the 24th, which is a Friday. I'm going to go, go ahead and make a motion to authorize GFL to, to facilitate this bulk waste pickup event on the dates of Monday, the 20th of October, through Friday, the 24th of October, at the town of Stokesdale Town Hall.
I'll second, but the paper here says the third, it stops on Thursday, the 23rd. Derek?
The paper does? Let's go with the paper, my friend.
Yeah, that's what, that's what it says.
So allow me to, to please revise my motion for the 20th.
You got it. And I'll add, the reason that is, they'll be picking it up on the morning of the 24th, but I think it's best that we run the event through the 23rd, so that everything's dropped off a Thursday night, so when they come Friday morning, they can just pick them up and take them on.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
Okay, I have a, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I got it.
Got a second? Any discussion?
I have a question. What kind of bulk items are we talking about?
I can give you, there'll be a flyer that'll come out, but I can give you a list of things that's allowed and prohibited. I can't remember off the top of my head.
Admin question.
No batteries, no people.
Things like paint wouldn't, would not be allowed.
Certain few we might accept.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second.
I have a motion and a second.
Yes, defeat.
Call for the vote. Mr. Foy.
Aye.
Mr. Landrith.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
And I am also aye. Consideration of a quote for the replacement of the town water system customer service manager's desktop computer.
Yeah, unfortunately, her computer is, is on the last leg. The computer is five years old. And the, the expected life for a computer, according to TCS, our vendor, is three to five years of use. The expected life of kind of any commercial laptop, three to five years. It's under warranty for three years. The computer, you know, is acting up, so, so to speak. It's, it's slow due to the age. It lacks RAM and is, is, is just not running, running well. And they've had issues beyond that. And Robbie, you can expand on that if, if any of the guys have any questions. I'll go ahead and get a motion on the floor, though. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to accept the quote from Total Computer Solutions dated September the 15th, 2025. The quote number is 1253. It is to replace Priscilla's laptop with a Dell Pro desktop. The amount of the quote, including taxes, is $907.38.
I'll second. You have got the money budgeted right.
That's the question I had. We do have this in the budget?
Yes, this will come out of item number 4600 from office equipment purchase and repair.
Any further discussion? Call for the vote. Mr. Foy.
I'm aye.
Mr. Landrith.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
I'm aye.
And I am also aye. Next item is consideration of a quote for the seasonal installation and removal of Christmas banners in downtown Stokesdale. Mr. Foy?
Same vendor we've used for the, I believe, the past four or five years to put the Christmas banners up downtown. The price has not changed. It's $1,000. So I'm going to make a motion that we authorize price meal towing to hang those banners in the amount of $1,000, that this money should come out of the event fund line.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Call for a vote. Mr. Foy?
I'm aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye. Traffic cone purchase and possible budget amendment. Mr. Foy?
Yeah, so, so the spirit of this is to purchase 30 new traffic cones that are 36 in, 36 inches in height, that contain a six-inch and four-inch reflective collar. The cones are heavy duty, they're 12 pounds each. And I've gotten four different quotes for those, ranging from $863.06 to $1,398.42. Happy to field any questions and answer them to the best of my ability. I do have a preference for one. In, in, in the motion, I, well, I'd like to hear it for some discussion first, if there is any.
You've already looked at them all, make the motion, what you think's the best.
Well, I, you know, I don't know what's best, but in this case, I am going to make a motion that authorizes the town to pay a premium for made in the USA product. In my judgment, we have the money in the budget. So I'm going to make a motion that we authorize Robbie to make a purchase for these traffic cones from the traffic safety store for the made in the USA traffic cones, 36 inch in height with a six-inch and four-inch reflective collars, in the amount of $1,382.89.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Is that option number two, Derek?
It is, sir.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Whoa, 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 wait a minute. You, you, I'm, 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 I was looking at the traffic safety, option one, that's not
No, I think he did. I think Tim did. Just checking that motion, didn't you, Tim?
Yeah, I did, but I, I, I'm backing up here a second, because I got a question.
That's fine.
The, the only, the only one of them that's American-made is option two.
To, to the best of my knowledge, Tim. Unless I missed something.
And, and the specs are basically the same 12-pound, 36-inch, four-inch and six-inch reflective collars.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Foy, I apologize, this may sound a little silly, but I like that grooved recess in, in, in option one with that, that particular cone, because I found that I can pick them up and move them a whole lot easier. But, you know, if, if, if we want to buy the American-made ones, I like that even better. So that, that's what was running through my mind.
Unfortunately, we don't always have the option to, to, to pay a premium for American-made, because we are on a tight budget. But it is my judgment that, you know, this is within the budget and it's, you know, I'm, you know, for, for, I'm a big supporter of US manufacturing. It's my livelihood, so, yeah.
I, I will sustain my second on it. Thank you for the explanation.
Is, is the company capable of stenciling these with our name on it?
At a premium.
How much is the premium, do you know, offhand?
Oh, buddy, I don't. I don't.
I would, I would like to see that on it. The only problem is, it's going to make it a souvenir for people if we're not careful, but.
Well, I, without, I, I've had problems with my, my company, with them being stolen all over everywhere.
Yeah.
And I, I haven't marked in some particular way, so you can identify them to law enforcement might be important. We could do that in a number of ways I can think of. I wouldn't want to reveal suggestions here in a public meeting.
Okay, very good.
But Mr. Foy and I talked about this before the meeting. I tend to agree with Mr. Foy. He said the cost of having, you know, a town of Stokesdale stenciled on them would be so expensive that we could, we could just about buy them twice. And so we only put these things out primarily at the parade. They're out just basically a few days, and then we've, we've got to pick them back up for safekeeping. So I don't know, who would, who would steal parade cones off our parade route? I don't know a special pox on them if they do, but.
Probably the same people that steal signs.
Probably that guy's got them all down there on the corner. I wonder where he got these.
Funny you are.
Mr. Landrith, were you suggesting I didn't pay for those?
Oh, I don't, I don't know. I don't even know for yours.
Well, I'm not, I'm not on trial here, Mr. Landrith, if I can produce.
I didn't say anything about you.
Okay, okay. Any further discussion? We have a motion? Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I said my second would stand.
A long time ago.
Okay, we have a second. Motion and a second. Let's call for the vote. Mr. Foy?
I'm aye.
Mr. Landrith? Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye. Consideration of spending authority for the 2025 Stokesdale Christmas Parade, scheduled for Saturday, December the thirteenth, 2025, at 2:00 PM.
Okay. Uh, first, gentlemen, I believe I'd like to pass out some documents. I'm going to request a budget amendment. I've asked Kim to prepare one, and I'm going to put that forward. Yeah, guys, if you just look at the, the top line, uh, the revenue from the last two parades, twenty-two...
Do we need to wait on our clerk? Our clerk stepped down.
Yeah, uh, uh, I, I don't think so, but if, if something comes up, certainly.
We'll back up if we need to.
Just highlighting the revenue, uh, that's we get from different sponsors and, and donors of, uh, and participants in the parade. In twenty-three, we're at five thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars. Twenty-four, five thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. Those come from an average of fifty-four different sponsors and contributions every year. It's, uh, you know, raising money is a lot of hard work and, uh, from an expense standpoint, in twenty-three, we were at four thousand, at forty-eight hundred roughly. In twenty-four, we're one hundred roughly. This year, the cost is going to go up. Uh, it is, it is my judgment, we need to, uh, have, have some additional deputies at different spots in downtown, so to increase the number of deputies, we hire from six to nine. On top of that, the cost per deputy is projected to go up significantly, uh, this year. Uh, I'm projecting the cost per deputy to be two hundred and thirty-five dollars, uh, for the day, so per deputy. Uh, last year, that number was a hundred and seventy-six, so we're, we're looking at a thirty-four percent increase. Uh, very necessary, in my opinion. Uh, the budget amendment, goodness gracious, Steve. I believe the budget amendment is for seven thousand dollars. Uh, however, we've just authorized, uh, to spend some money on cones. So, basically, I'm asking for, uh, a spending authority of six thousand dollars, uh, for the parade. And you, you can see there, uh, on the sheet I passed out, what our different, uh, projected cost by cost center will be. So, I, you know.
Does, does the, um, does the publication of Connect Two, does it correspond with this? Are we getting in time for this? Will there be, will there be an issue?
We, we will, and, and you're right, it is called Connect Two now, but I've, I noted Northwest Observer, uh, on the projection page. But yes, there will be another average.
Say it again? I can't hear you.
It, it should come out around the second or the third.
Oh, okay, good.
So, and we'll need things like porta-potties, trash cans, deputy coverage, uh...
Mr. Foy, with all due respect, I'm just asking, because I don't know.
Of course.
Did, did the sheriff's department recommend an upgrade from six to nine? Is this the park committee? Or, uh, you feel like our parade is, is grown to the point where we need the extra insurance of three more? Where, where did we come up with nine? How do we know we don't need eleven, I guess, is my question?
Yeah, goo- goo- good question. Uh, just, yeah, it's, six is a good number, uh, for the road traffic. I would like an additional three for pedestrian traffic after the parade. And it's coming from, I guess, just being there in my eyes, looking at, uh, people crossing the road, especially at Ellisboro, uh, there at the Business Center, while the floats are trying to get back to, uh, down, uh, get back to the parking lot there at the Business Center. It's, it's hectic. It's unsafe. You know, last year, I was being the traffic guy. I have no business being the traffic guy. We need a uniform officer, uh, to ensure the safety of our citizens.
Okay. And, and my other question is, have, have we periodically requested that Sheriff Danny Rogers, you know, provide a deputy or two out of his budget? Do they just not do that? I, I would be upset if I discovered that we were paying for extra deputies wherein other a town, other towns holding events were getting deputies for free. So, is there a sheriff's department official policy on this kind of thing?
I would say there, I would say, I don't know, but, uh, their, their policy is, you know, if you need an after-duty, uh, deputy coverage to go through the company they go through, we don't go through the sheriff's department. It's, it's, it's a new company this year, hence the thirty-four percent price increase. Uh, you know, I, I, the Sheriff Rogers is out here every year and, and his department is, as participants in the parade.
How, how would you feel about me asking a question from a member of the audience that's knowledgeable about law enforcement matters?
That's fine. I have no problem.
Billy Queen? Do you have any idea whether or not the Guilford County Sheriff's Department's got a policy that covers town events? When we're in, they provide deputies past a certain point, uh, crowd size, et cetera, et cetera? You, you can take the podium if you want to, so we can all hear you.
Well, I, I, you know, mine, I was standing up here and saying, no, I don't. I know that, uh, deputies are often paid, as you know, off duty for a myriad of, uh, jobs out there. And that's all I can really tell you right now. I don't know what the particular policy is. But I would agree with you that if Guilford County is furnishing deputies to other events for free, then they should do it for you for free.
Well, should you discover the answer, contact me, will you?
I'll, you know what? I'll look into that, and I will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Foy, thank you for...
Do we have a motion, Mr. Foy?
Uh...
You did make a motion for six thousand dollars?
Yeah, to, just, just to kind of oversee. It, it's very similar to what we've done in the past. The only thing that's not similar is, uh, the amount.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion?
Well, as a matter of fact, Mayor, I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Foy, if, if you don't mind.
I don't.
It has been, I've done this several times, several years in a row, but it, it's always my opinion and only sworn town council members should be spending the town's money, and we should be careful about letting volunteers spend the town's money and all that sort of thing. So, in the past, you know, with these situations, I have requested a language in a motion to allow you and Mr. Landrith to approve expenditures if you agree. And if you disagree, then those would need to come back to the town council. So, is this the appropriate time to, to put, once again, reinforce that rule? So, we can, we don't have a hang-up going down the road for some reason?
So, Jimmy and I, you know, we talk, for sure. Uh, I think in my motion, I, I think I specified myself. Maybe I didn't. If I did, I meant to. Uh, but I'm certainly, I mean, Jimmy's, work with Jimmy very closely, so absolutely.
You're, you're safer with being monitored by Mr. Landrith, because he's pretty smart.
Yeah, Jimmy's, Jimmy is very smart.
Yeah.
Yeah, let, let's have Jimmy on this and, um, see if we can...
So, so that, that would be my suggestion to add to the, uh, to the motion.
Any objections to that amendment? Without objection? Any further discussion?
Yeah, I object.
You object?
I mean, I'll do it. I don't think, I, I don't see the need for it, but I will do it.
My, my, I, I, I want to, I want to modify my amount to fifty-six hundred dollars. It's, it's for a reason. It's, it falls within the budget amendment that I'm getting ready to make a motion for.
So, we change the six thousand to fifty-six hundred?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir.
With that amendment, any objection? Any further discussion? Call for the vote. Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
I am aye.
And I am aye. And are, you have one other, consideration of spending authority? We did that.
Uh, we've done that. We need to do the budget amendment. Probably should have done that right before the motion we just made, but we're cool here.
Traffic cone purchases, we didn't do the budget amendment. I'm sorry.
And it's, it's, it's okay.
We approved the, we approved the cones. We didn't do the amendment.
It's, it's, it's all good. No, no money's been...
Mr. Foy, yes, sir.
Uh, I, I make a motion that we adopt Budget Ordinance Amendment Number One, Ordinance Number O-2026-5. Uh, this budget amendment increases the line item for the Events Fund, line item twenty-one hundred, uh, from forty-five hundred dollars to seven thousand dollars. And so, that's a twenty-five hundred dollar increase. To offset that, we will take twenty-five hundred dollars from the contingency fund, uh, and everything will be balanced. So, that's my motion.
Second.
And my apologies, that is supposed to be ordinance number twenty-two-five-dash-O-six.
Okay.
Twenty-two-five-dash-O-six.
What was it before? Twenty-two-six?
It's twenty-two-five-dash-O-five, sorry.
Got you. Robbie, you're so forward-thinking, I thought that, you know...
It's for next year.
Yes, sir.
Do I have any further, do I have any further, I have a motion and I have a second. Do I have any further discussion? Call for a vote. Mr. Foy?
I'm aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
I am aye.
And I am also aye. We will open the floor again for public comments. I would ask that you please limit it to three minutes, if anyone would like to speak. The floor is yours. Appears we have no takers. I'm going to ask for council comments. Mr. Foy?
Uh, thank you to the folks that showed up tonight. Uh, you know, special thanks, uh, to staff. Uh, it's good to see Patty Stokes again, uh, Connect Two Northwest Guilford. Uh, I always thanks to Chuck. Uh, it was good to meet Darby with Guilford County Planning. She did a wonderful job tonight. And as always, thank you to my colleagues. Uh, just looking ahead, this year, Halloween is, uh, it does fall on a weekend, Friday night. Uh, it's, it's, it's just, please, 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 exercise, uh, extreme caution. With all the hybrid vehicles on the road these days, those things are quiet. Uh, and, and so, please, 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 just exercise extreme caution. Thank you and have a good weekend.
Mr. Landrith?
I'd like to thank everybody for being here, and it is good to see Patty. I didn't see you down here, Patty. You snuck in like a little mouse or something. Oh, boy. Uh, it is nice to see everybody here, uh. Sometimes we won't have one or two this time of night. I guess it's because it's not twelve o'clock, like it is so many times.
I guess we're going to have an election before, uh, we get back, right?
Yes.
Yep, so good, good luck to everybody. Don't, don't have a lot of people running, but, you know, we've got good people running, so. Won't be in good hands. You guys have done a good job. I don't know if I'll fire you or not, but we've done a good job. We've done, got a lot accomplished and, uh, enjoyed working with you. That's about all. Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank our eight citizens that are still with us. At the end of our meeting here, it's always, uh, feels better when I'm looking at a few faces instead of empty chairs. Uh, you know, I'd like to echo Mr. Foy's concern about the kids and Halloween. Uh, I, I just, I, I'm from years past, going out with little kids. Mine are not so little anymore that I go with. But, but, uh, you know, if you got a little herd of them, three or four or five, uh, sometimes it's hard to watch every last one of them. So, I, I, I just really hope the drivers out there will use, use caution and be really careful. I, I would also like to encourage everybody to, to vote. You can vote early at one of the polling places in Guilford County. To set up for that, or you can come to the Town Hall here and vote on November the fourth. And, uh, you know, that's what makes our country go around, or makes, it's a functional repub- constitutional republic. And I'm, I'm thankful for the system we have over, uh, being under the jurisdiction of a king or dic- dictator or communist government. So, uh, I'm just thankful to live in Stokesdale.
I'd like to thank everyone for being here. Patty, it's always good to see you. Thank you for coming. Uh, reiterate, I, I don't know if you've heard, if you've been outside as one of these electric cars has passed, but they make no noise. So, to Derek's point and to Tim's point, uh, just please, let the kids be aware, help to make the kids aware. Uh, one of these things could slip up on me, and, uh, granted, I'm not a, I'm not as young as I used to be, but, uh, the electric cars just make no noise. So, uh, please keep that in mind. Everybody be safe. It is important that you vote. Please, if you would, it is on November the fourth here at the Town Hall. And as Tim mentioned, there is early voting starting the sixteenth. It's our way of telling the elected officials what we want done, so it's always appreciated. With that said, I've got a couple of announcements. Regular Town Council, regular Town Board of Adjustment Meeting is canceled. This is for, uh, October the fourteenth, October the twenty-third, 2025. The Regular Town Planning Board Meeting is scheduled for seven PM, eleven oh four, 2025. Regular Town Board of Adjustment Meeting, seven PM. That's Election Day. Am I... No, I'm sorry. Yes, that's Election Day. Eleven oh four, 2025. We have a meeting scheduled for then?
You're correct. That is Election Day. I have to double-check the schedule. That may be a typo. Uh, we try to move those based off holidays, but that one may have slipped through the cracks. Good news is, we haven't had a Board of Adjustment Meeting all year, so I don't think we'll have that one either.
The chances are it would be canceled anyway, but okay, but it, it is scheduled for the fourth.
Good catch.
Okay, uh...
Then, then would it be appropriate to make a motion to cancel it?
Yeah, there you go.
I wouldn't, I, I, okay. I've got a motion and a second. Discussion? Call for the vote. Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye. On November the eleventh, 2025, Stokesdale Town Co- Town Hall is closed for Veterans Day. Uh, we would ask everybody to take part in the Veterans Day Celebration that is taking, uh, place at our Vulcan Quarry, uh, on one fifty-eight. And, uh, on, uh, eleven thirteen, 2025, Regular Town Council Meeting is called for seven PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
You do, sir.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion? Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye.
One eleven, one eight fifteen, but it ain't far from it.
What did you do? Did you hit your knee?
We'd, uh, enjoy hounds.
I don't hear you.
I'm sorry? Yeah, yeah, right now. I'm excited.
It's going to be...
Uh, ten thirty.
Yeah, what, are you a bike rider?